All right, good evening. This is the May 29th, 2013 Rhinebeck Town Board meeting, and we'll start tonight with a question.
To the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, for announcements, we have, the Highway Department is hosting a household hazardous and electronic waste disposal day. That's on Saturday, June 1st. Registration and payments are required before June 1st. You can contact the Dutchess County Resource Recovery Agency at 463-6020. Brush drop-off has resumed at the old town dump site on the last Saturday of every month. That's through November. You can drop your brush off from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. That's every Saturday, every last Saturday of the month.
But if it snows in August, it'll stop.
The town transfer station will be open on Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Through August 21st. This is in addition to the regular Saturday hours, to the regular Saturday hours of 7:00 a.m. to 2:00. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Got you. Just call the town clerk if you have any questions. 876-3409. Okay, motion and second to approve the May 13th minutes.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So moved. We have liaison reports, departmental audit reports. Have any reports to be made?
Audit reports or?
Liaison, departmental audit.
I think there's an audit in front of us. I could go over liaison stuff after if you want.
After you.
Okay, grievance day was yesterday. We had 31 people come, and it went very smoothly, and I think all these steps will be done this week or by Tuesday of next week. Tech Committee is, I guess officially disbanded. There are no members, so I have worked, and Jim Jeffries helped me. I've got a great draft together for our county grant application. I'll get that over to the village, make any changes, and get that submitted before the deadline. Web is ticking along nicely. Kim Russell is working to collect data. If you guys haven't spoken to her, please do. She's about halfway done collecting all the data, and then we'll start moving it. And I think that's about all that I have.
Let's see, well, the pool opened this weekend. The water was cold. We didn't open Saturday and Sunday because of the weather, but Monday was the free day, and we had lots of people there, even though the water was cold. So they would jump in and get out, that kind of a thing. So that's coming along. The registrations are picking up. Looks like we're going to have a full program, or all the programs will probably be full this year. The landfill, we've gotten two pipes in, in the Beaver Dam. The C.A.B. volunteered to dig a trench for the third pipe, which is in the stream channel. We don't think that's advisable, but we really appreciate the thought. We figured a way of getting in there without getting into the wetland, so that seems to be going okay, because you can drive back to the brush pile that says the water table's down. It's down about two feet right now. I met with the engineer from Chazen, and they want it down another 18 inches, so we're waiting to see what happens. So we have another pipe that potentially have to put in. As far as departmental audits, I finished the rec audit for 2012. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because there's some names in here of residents. I've given it to John. Basically, we have some accounts receivable problems that the town board needs to work with the staff on. And we also have a little bit of payroll issue where people were put on the payroll without the town board's knowledge, and we need to fix that as well.
How do we fix that, Bruce?
Well, it says in there how we're going to do it. I just don't want to go through it right now, because of all the names.
Okay, so we'll read these and go back to it.
But as a board, we need to deal with this one.
Just a question about some of the return checks. Do we have any recourse for that, or we'll talk about it? Let me read it. We'll talk about it.
Well, the way it looks, it looks like it's a dead space. If the checks bounce, or the checks are not turned in when they're supposed to be turned in, there doesn't seem to be any follow-up. In talking with Tom, there hasn't been any notification of it, so we do have a hole. This year was, you know, as I said, it was 790 bucks. Oh, no, the other one is Vanderburgh Cove. We're this close, this close, to finishing up the grant money on that. The E.F.C. and the D.E.C. are sending us letters now asking for where we are, so we're this close. We've turned in everything we think we know that we need to turn in, so we should see that money any day now. It's been years.
Good, good work. I have some zoning review group stuff, but I'll come to that later in discussion.
Okay. So, in light of the audit theme, as you may know, the Mayor's State Controllers Office has the final audit for the town, their review of the 2011, 2012 years, and of course, they've identified deficiencies in some risk assessments, as that's what their job is, and we welcome their comments and recommendations. And the town board is, you know, we've been looking forward to an audit from them since 2008. We had previously hired Seador Company to do a risk assessment audit, because we thought that they wouldn't come earlier. However, these comments and recommendations, we welcome them, and we've had a constructive relationship with the examiners from the Controllers Office. So we intend on having a return for remedy for the recommendations by the end of June, and we had them working on them, so that's all I have to say on that. By the way, these departmental audits were, although it's not in the report, this is something that's unusual for towns to do, but they were, they applaud our efforts to water ourselves when we can, and it's what they recommend. So moving on to business items, we have a resolution approving the voucher 5B, voucher V469, to V537, amount of $38,050 and 55 cents. A motion and second?
Motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Much.
Comment?
You're going to have to get another set of eyes on this after we, you could have three.
Three.
You could have three.
Right.
Yeah, three auditors.
Sorry?
You got to have three auditors on these vouchers.
Oh.
So we're approving it, but...
What, didn't, we all, I signed them yesterday.
I signed them yesterday too, or today, or whatever it was, but that's not three of us. So we got to get Joe or Gina when they come back to go through this bunch.
Tom didn't, you didn't?
He can't sign them, because he's the one issuing the checks.
Who's approving them, okay.
So we can approve these pending there.
We just, it's just, we got to have it, somebody go back and look at them afterwards.
So all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, and that's so moved. Resolution approving the preliminary capital project for 2013 abstract for $9,660.90. Motion or second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 Aye, opposed, so moved. Resolution approving the budget transfer amendments.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 Aye, opposed, so moved. Item 4 is authorizing the sale of the surplus equipment, namely the forklift. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All this is, is we put out the bid, and we had a minimum price of 16. We didn't get any bidders, so we're lowering it to 14, going out. Again.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay. Item 5 is a resolution related to the review of the draft Affordable Housing Law. Is there a motion and second?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 So moved. Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the Highway Department, Highway Superintendent, to advertise for the 2014 material bids. A motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 So moved. Item 7 is a resolution designation for the service of notices of claim under General Municipal Law 53.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm still reading it.
I read it this morning.
I'll go aye.
Aye, opposed. All in favor, aye. Item 8 is a resolution approving the summer rec hires. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, makes it fully staffed for the summer?
As far as I know, we don't have any openings now.
I don't think this, this includes the swim team hires, but I think those are coming later anyway.
The coaches.
Coaches, that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All in favor, aye.
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 I just have a question about process. We're just given this right now, so how has it been vetted, or is this all done, the rec?
These are supposed to be the rates from last year. There were no increases given this year.
It's the same thing.
Very nice, ayes.
Aye.
Items for discussion? Is the first item the Green Building Standards?
I met with the zoning review group. That's our chair of the zoning board, planning board, and our land use attorney. In our comp plan, we have a requirement that we enact, and we have a moratorium on this. We met with our zoning administrator, and we have unanimous recommendation to delete this from our zoning code. We feel that this is creating another level of permitting for our residents, and it's placing a burden on us to enforce it and administer it. And I can just read this. "At the request of the town board, the zoning review group committee has undertaken a review of Section 125-61 of our zoning code. This section currently the subject of a six-month moratorium. The committee, while recognizing the desirability of the objectives in this section is intended to achieve, has included that this section should be deleted from the zoning code for the following reasons. And the first, as written, is that the section makes reference to the LEED certification criteria as a basis for administering this section. The complexity and the cost the town would incur in administering this certification program, the cost to the residents in meeting the requirements of LEED, as well as our current inability to inform all potential applicants for permits to develop the land in the town that these requirements are in place compel our committee to recommend the deletion of this section at this time." Section 121-61 does offer the town the ability to have the planning board develop an alternative criteria to LEED, so something that will be easier to administer, and we could develop that to meet the same objectives. At this time, the planning board is not in a position to develop the alternative, but that is something that they will take up in the near future. It is also the belief that, and it's true, that the state of New York is working on a plan to augment this state standards for building and fire codes, as well as energy efficiency standards, that in time could be adopted by the town and integrated into our zoning regulations. So the state seems to be doing this work for us. It's another layer of permitting and another layer of government that we would have to administer, so the recommendation was that we delete it from our code.
I think we would need to, it would be a lot, a change in law, so I think we have to follow the process of a hearing.
Yes.
And so on, so I don't know at this point, we could just put it on the agenda for public hearing for a meeting.
Sure, sure. A discussion and...
Is that the right protocol, John?
I think probably the thing to do would be to ask the, maybe John Lyons, to draft, you'll need a local law.
He will, yeah.
He would draft it, and he would go through the local law process.
And then we would need a hearing after that.
Right, we laid on the desks, and then you'd approve the resolution for a public hearing.
Okay.
And then we'd have the time period.
So we're at least two meetings out with a public hearing.
Probably.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it's a discussion item on the table, and what we'll do is ask John to come up to give a local law draft.
How long was the discussion?
We were there for about an hour and a half. We'd been talking about it previously, and had talked to our zoning administrator. I think this is the third time we met about it. Why?
Because we spent months and months and months on this.
What do you mean, months and months and months?
Months and months and months, back when we were doing the zoning and the comp plan, getting it in. And so I'm just wondering.
I can't speak to what the process was then, but it seems to be a burden that we can't take on unless we're willing to hire someone to administer it, or give our zoning administrator additional hours, and develop it professionally. We can decide against this. This is the recommendation of the zoning review group.
Okay, we can have this discussion then, but my read of the code is it's the building inspector, not the Z.E.O., that's supposed to check this stuff. And so I'm confused already.
Well, it's LEED. It's the LEED. We can have another standard.
And the code provides for that. So, okay. All right, we'll have the discussion.
You're only eliminating the LEED part of the Green Building Code. That's the recommendation?
Yes.
So the Green Building Code would stand just...
Section 125-61 makes reference to LEED. That's the only thing it refers to.
So the recommendation is just to take the LEED part out, but leave the Green Building Code intact minus the LEED?
Potentially.
That's not...
That's to be discussed.
That's not what I understood.
That's to be discussed. It's their recommendation that we do away with holding residents to the green standard.
That's the whole Green Building Code?
Yes, that's the whole section.
The whole section to come in?
It's referred to as LEED in our law. Their recommendation...
In the law states, it's the Green Building Code. LEED is one of the things.
Yeah, is referenced.
It's referenced as one of the things that a applicant...
We'll have a public hearing, and our land use attorney will be here to take us through it. That's the recommendation, that we don't, that we delete it from our code at this time.
All right, so that would be up at the next town board meeting, or public hearing, or?
No, we would, public hearing would be at least two meetings out. We want to, I want to see what the attorney would draft up as a proposal for the change, and then we would approve or deny a hearing date for that proposal.
And there might be more specifics at that time?
Absolutely.
Because you referenced cost and administering it, so there would be specifics on what those issues are.
Well, we've heard our zoning administrator here at previous meetings explain to us what the process would be. And Bruce, can you just clarify, I don't understand what you were asking before. That we spent months and months and months on this in the comp plan?
Yeah, yeah, during the zoning back in 2008, 2009, we spent months and months and months on this. We, you know, we toned it down as much as we possibly could.
Who's we, the?
Town board, and the consultants, and the lawyers, and everything else. And, you know, we did what we thought was right for the community, and to be honest with you, I've never been able to understand what the zoning officer was saying about it personally. It didn't make sense to me. To me, this is, this is, you changed the words from certify to certifiable, and you move on, because there's alternatives in there. It's not LEEDs. There's...
Green building standard, nice sort of...
Right, so this...
Energy star...
This, to me, well, let's just say it's not sitting well with me right now. I'll wait, though.
Well, tell me why it isn't sitting well. Are you feeling like it's a rash recommendation?
Yeah.
And having heard from the code enforcement officer, the building department, because it's his job to certify the building itself.
Well, I guess what we will call the board heads here in our land use attorney and discuss it.
Item 2 is zoning review group recommendations on the Maguire proposed zoning change. We have two for discussion.
Okay, again, our zoning review group met with Dan Schuster, who is the planner that Mr. Maguire has retained to advise him on how to proceed with the zoning change request. The zoning review group met with him today, and a viable option for us seems to be creating an overlay district from the RC5 to the neighborhood infill overlay. There are some inconsistencies, there's an inconsistency that was pointed out. Well, first of all, first of all, the area that we're talking about, the Maguire Lane King, is it Road or Drive? Thank you. Has 37 lots. When the zoning was changed, it's the only pocket east of Route 9 that has this kind of density that was changed. It threw all, 35 out of the 37 homes into non-conformity. So as it's zoned now, these homes are not conforming with regards to set, I don't think 35 of the houses could add a deck without needing a variance. So it put the neighborhood into a state of not being able to conform with how they're zoned. An inlay district is used to implement change in areas just like this, so it's a perfect fit. It would allow the 35 lots to conform, and it would give us the density which the comp, which the zoning law lays out. It says here, "Chapter 5 of our land use rezone the entire R1 district south of the village and east of Route 9 to the new rural countryside RC5 zoning district. However, it still asks us that we retain limited portions of the town with a one-acre zoning to recognize existing residential neighborhoods and to permit limited additional development of a similar scale in these areas." So it pretty much says right there that in, with a neighborhood such as this, we're permitted to do that. So I...
This is, with 30, how many, 30 lots, you said?
37.
And if 37 lots are owned by one person, it's not a spot zone?
No, it's a neighborhood.
It's a district, it's an area.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And as I recall, that, yeah, that this is a residential neighborhood. The way it exists today, the lots, some of the lots are used as commercial construction lots, where they're used for commercial equipment, like backhoes and larger trucks and so on. This change would allow the properties to conform to a residential style.
Yes. As a matter of fact, if we were to change it to this inlay district, the scheduled use of regulations would be, there would be less uses there. So it would absolutely become a neighborhood. You wouldn't be able to have businesses, golf courses, cottages, a whole bunch of things that you are allowed to have, and an R5, like elderly assisted living, guest cottages, multifamily new construction, three or more accessory buildings other than farms, a cemetery, a children's camp, or an adult camp. The list goes on and on. Fairground-related uses, educational institutional uses, funeral homes, golf, you know, so it brings it into a residential area and would allow these 35 lots to conform. So...
So we would have, this is a recommendation by the zoning review group, and we would have to approve?
There's nothing to approve. We're really taking the board's temperature as to whether or not we're open to hearing a zoning, a proposed zoning change for this area, and the applicant, and the applicant's willing to submit an applicant, would be allowed, he can submit an application anyway, but we are the lead on this. So it's a, it's a public temperature-taking, and just letting the public know what the findings were. It seems to be perfectly tailored for this situation. If we wanted to consider it, the recommendation is that there's latitude for this, and it doesn't seem to set any precedent that could be detrimental to us with other zoning changes because of the specificity of it being east of Route 9, you know, and the proximity to the village.
This one makes sense. I like this one. Thank you.
So I think we need to send it back to the planning board, or give it, make the planning board, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
We're lead, so we can, I will let Dan Schuster know that we discussed it, and we all seem to be in agreement, and we'd welcome an application for a zoning change for this area.
Item 3 is the application for the Dutchess County Self-Inured Workers Compensation.
Okay, because I am insurance woman, I guess, or so I've become. The county, the county has, Dutchess County has a self-insured workman's compensation program, and I'd like to, although it's a, you know, a pretty big application, I'd like to fill it out to see if we could save even more money. I don't know what the parameters of it are in terms of self-insurance, but some towns have realized some pretty good savings, so I say we go for it.
Yeah, Malinero talked about it this morning, and he...
What did he say? It was great?
Yeah, he said it was great, and everybody's saving money, and all this. There's the excess coverage, which is the big part of the application.
Yeah, they offer an excess coverage through, not state, that's our old...
Yeah, but he said that's the big part of the application.
They have a, they have a wraparound coverage for us, yeah.
We're still way high with, even with the 15, 17,000 you saved us.
Maybe we can save even more.
Yeah.
You know, we're down 40,000 in insurance. I think any, any, any opportunity we have to look at it, I'm willing to do it. That's all I got.
So we don't have an executive session today?
We do.
We do?
One second, we're...
It's the, that letter that Joe put in everybody's box from the prosecutor.
There's a personnel letter that we need to discuss.
For the executive session and stuff. So we'll take comments from the county legislature, and then we'll go to executive session.
Thanks, Bobby Brief. I don't think I'm at liberty to say who, but there was a Republican-elected official that expressed to me over the last week that, I'm not going to say he or she, they were concerned with the $1.2 million bond that's come before us for design of a new county jail. So it's really, it's really not a Republican-Democratic issue. I would just briefly point out, if you look at all...
Good stuff. So, we don't have an executive session today?
We do.
We do?
The, one second, we're...
The, that letter that Joe put in everybody's box, from the prosecutor?
There's a, there's a personnel letter that we need to discuss.
For the, the test, and stuff. So, we'll take comments from the county legislature, and then we'll go to executive session.
Thanks, I'll be brief. I don't think I'm at liberty to say who, but there was a Republican elected official that expressed to me over the last week that, I'm not gonna say he or she, they were concerned with the $1.2 million bond that's come before us for design of a new county jail. So, it's really, it's really not a Republican, Democratic issue. I would just briefly point out, if you look at Albany County, if you look at Brooklyn, if you look at Tompkins County, if you look at Westchester County, if you look at Newark, New Jersey, they're doing amazing things to slash recidivism that we're not doing here. So, that's, it's, it's gonna come before us, there was a big meeting last night, I'm sure you'll see something, there was something in today's Poughkeepsie Journal, there'll probably be something in tomorrow's Daily Freeman. Next Wednesday, here in this room, I'm hosting regular forums at 5:30. Some people have brought forward, shared with me issues regarding Ferncliff Nursing Home. I've called Ferncliff Nursing Home Executive Director Carl Kelly a number of times, invited him to be here, or representative, but I'm just putting it out there, because it's no good to have an open public forum if nobody knows about it. So, that's next, that's next Wednesday, June 5th, at 5:30 in this room.
What's the, what's the concern?
You would not believe the, the way, some of the things that I've heard about, some of the things that are, the way the staff are treated, and I'm just, I, I just can't believe that everything that I've heard are lies, or is lies. It's just some really, start, some really startling things.
You said the way staff are treated?
Yeah.
So, this has nothing to do with the care there, or the quality of the...
To be honest, I've also heard when the nuns ran the place, up until several years ago, apparently, that there, there's been a shift. There, so I'm not just concerned about staff, I'm concerned about, because it reflects on the, on the patients. But no matter how you feel about it, next Wednesday, 5:30 PM, I've reached out repeatedly to Ferncliff and, and to 1199, the 1199 union, they're justifiably concerned about the way that some of those folks are being treated. Wednesday, June 26, at 5:00 PM in this room is my normal monthly forum, people can come and rant, rave, or give me a hard time, or whatever. Madison County, Genesee County, and Tompkins County, they all have something, they're part of the solarizednewyork.org program, if you go to solarizemadison.com, it's 20% to 30% volume discount on solar for businesses, homeowners, municipalities. We've been trying to make this happen in Duchess County, that resolution will be on the agenda very soon, next Thursday, so if you wanna get it passed, show up next Thursday, committee day, speak up, go to solarizenewyork.org, solarizemadison.com to learn more about it. I just had another phone call, I've been talking with this guy for about a decade, Chris Gardner, he's the county attorney for Schenectady County, he verified with me that Schenectady County right now has five county buildings with solar panels on them, and I know that the town and village government, and Ryan Beck, you put a lot of communities to shame, because you have a lot of solar panels going on in the town buildings and village buildings already. We don't have any of that on the county buildings, unfortunately, we got geothermal, we got some solar at the community college, but Schenectady County, 30% savings on electric bills, no money down solar power purchase agreements. I'm partial, of course, to Hudson Valley Clean Energy, hudsonsolar.com, they work with modelist solar.com, I'm not trying to push any, there's all sorts of sun-up, sun city, but I'm just letting people know that, and I've actually, there seem to be a number of elected officials in northern Duchess County that are interested, working with me, Sustainable Hudson Valley seems interested, I'm some sort of a contest to see which municipality in Duchess County can have the highest percentage, and I went to high school in Ryan Beck, but I live in the town of Clinton, we're, we're gonna try to get solar in our house, which city, town, or village can have the highest percentage of homeowners and businesses with solar panels? And also, which municipality can have the highest percentage of homeowners and businesses with the free energy audits? Because there's about 110,000 homes in Duchess County, and less than 1,000 have participated in green jobs, green New York. So, I've been talking about that with Brenda Kegel, she sets up Ben Trout, I believe he's maybe a relation of yours, Ben, Ben is interested, and a number of elected officials, a radio station or two. The other thing about Chris Gardner, the Schenectady County Attorney, three quarters of a million dollars they save up there every year with an option, a Canadian prescription drug option for the county employees and retirees, FDA has never cracked down on them. The last thing I'll say is, the Poughkeepsie Journal has done maybe three trillion editorials over the last 15 years for a well-testing law, similar to Rockland County, and Westchester County, and New Jersey, for when properties change hands. It's coming back again, and I'm not the only one, a number of us are bringing that forth, so if you really don't wanna see that law passed, come out and raise hell. If you would like to see that law passed, like myself, because there's been groundwater contamination from MTB found in Ryan Beck, that Getty Station at 99G, there's all sorts of stuff going on. Long after MTB was banned from being put into gasoline, the Duchess County Health Department found it in the water. It's all over, it's in the town of Clinton, so, and the neighbor notification for pesticide application, that stuff's coming back, so, thank you for your patience, I'm at 876-2488, 4532105. Happy summer, everybody.
Joel's comments were brought to you by Hudson Valley Clean Energy.
I don't think, there's...
The first, the first facility to have zero carbon footprint in New York State.
Yeah, and they're, 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 they set the record for like the entire east coast, or, they're justifiably proud, yeah.
Hey Joel, does the county have anything to, like disaster generator plan or anything? Just, you were talking about water, I'm thinking of the public water here, much, much of Ryan Beck is, is public water, and if, if the power went out, nobody's gonna get water. Does the county do anything with that, or is...
I will look into it, I, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly, I have publicly questioned the willingness of some folks in the county legislature to allocate a lot of money for emergency generators for some county buildings, when a lot of things, other things have been cut back, but people in Ryan Beck need clean water, so I didn't even think about that, maybe the, myself and Marcus, we could offer a matching grant program. You know, he, I, I was here at that meeting too this morning, and he gave us a little bit of a stern and drang about the sales tax revenue, and roughly in the same place, and, you know, maybe more cuts, I hope, you know, there's not gonna be more cuts in sales tax revenue sharing with the municipalities, but perhaps we could work together and talk to Mr. Marcus about a, I don't think he's gonna give out willy-nilly...
I wasn't asking for money, I was asking for a program.
Yeah, maybe a matching grant program too, and, and I'll, I'll get on that, because the village handles a lot, a lot of the water.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's through them, but disaster preparedness is something you'd think the county would take the lead on.
Well, they have, they do have a, they do have a plan, I need to, I'll, I'll get to the bottom of what the plan is for Ryan Beck and water, because I think what, Poughkeepsie and Hyde Park, there's a number of communities up and down the river that get water from the river, so, I'll get on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. So, we have an executive session pertaining to a particular employee.
Employee employment.
Yeah.
Motion or second?
Motion.
Are we making any decisions?
We're not gonna make any decisions on the...
No.
Bye, Fred. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.